Here's we have, there we go. We're now recording. Yep.
Sorry about that. Forgot to hit record. So Jed, why don't you start over again?
Okay, so going back, it is seven oh five. We'll call the meeting to order. The, the roll call is, uh, regular members, Anne Creme, Scott Bresson, Steve Nelson, and myself present. There are no other members present, so no alternates will be seated. The only item on the agenda tonight, no items can be added because this is a special meeting, is, uh, new business discussion, uh, action on Ladano property on Shoddy Mill Road. And, uh, Eric, if you can let Hank share his screen, we'll, we'll go from there.
You got it Hank.
All right, hold on. I don't know if I lost mine when I was trying to, uh, uh, log in here. Oh, here we go. Hold on. Here we go. Folks see that?
Not yet.
No? No? Okay, hold on.
I'm glad it's a small attendance tonight. This is the most we've struggled with Zoom since we started doing these.
Wow. Screen sharing has failed. Oh, man. Okay, let's.
Are you doing the share screen at the bottom and the?
Yeah, 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 I do this all the time. You got it? Can you see it?
No.
No.
No. Okay, let's see. Not quite sure why it's, I'm getting a message that it's not.
You want to close out and have Eric try again? I know I had to do that to get my microphone to work tonight.
Let me try this one more time here.
Hello, Ian, is that you?
There we go.
Do you see it?
Not yet, but it says it's, you started sharing screen. There it is.
There we go.
Oh my God.
Okay, before you start there Hank, uh, Leanne, are you with us tonight?
Yes, um, I'm sorry, I didn't communicate with you at all about this meeting. So I apologize, I, I don't know if I'm even needed or if you've lined up alternates because I didn't get back to you in time.
Well, no alternates are here tonight and, uh, and I'm happy to have you here, Leanne, so, uh, it, uh, with, uh, with my screen saved, I'm gonna call at seven oh seven, Leanne joined the meeting. It is seated as a regular member.
I'm usually better than this. Yeah, I, I can see the agenda. I, I can't see your screen yet, but, um, oh, I just started trying.
Can other folks see the screen, the PowerPoint?
Oh, yes. Yes.
All right. I don't know what's, what's going on.
Leanne, did you get into Zoom?
Well, I'm still trying. I just, I saw the emails from a few minutes ago and I saw the one from Steve. So I went in through the town website and put in the, you know, I'm using a landline and now I'm trying to call it up on my, uh, computer.
Okay, yep, so we're gonna let, uh, we're gonna let Hank, uh, start with his discussion while, while you're doing that. We all had problems with Zoom tonight. Something, uh, must be a bad phase of the moon or something.
It's those solar flares.
Solar flare, yeah.
They're doing it. Okay, um, you want me to begin?
Yes, go ahead Hank.
Okay, um, so I just wanted to, just a couple of quick slides to sort of ground everybody again where, where we are, the location and the value of the, the parcel we're talking about. So, um, if folks remember that we have, uh, three open space corridors that are mapped in the town, um, they were mapped in our two thousand fifteen plan of conservation and development. The lower, and they're outlined with the dotted black lines that you see. Um, the Western Highlands Open Space Corridor is the one there on the lower, the southern section, southwestern section of Andover. And that includes, um, the areas that are, um, currently open space that you see there. Uh, the Hartford Neighborhood Centers area, the, the state Bishop's Wildlife Management Area. It's the town property there over on the, the Bolton line there. Um, and the, uh, town property where the transfer station is that connects to the rail trail. And then you can see the juxtaposition of the hundred and sixty-two acre Ladano property. The numbers in parentheses associated with each parcel are the acreage of them. Um, so you can see from a, a larger landscape perspective, from an open space corridor, the Ladano property is a significant connecting piece. It's a large track. And it's a significant connecting piece among two, two blocks of town property, the eighty acres, uh, that it has the transfer station and connects to the rail trail, the Hop River State Park Trail. And then the thirty-eight acres of, uh, town land, and if you recall, that was built up with some town land we had, and then the donations that we accepted, I believe, last year, um, from Tom Talbot and from the Northern Connecticut Land Trust. Uh, so that's, that's sort of the, the landscape perspective. Um, this is a map that basically shows some of the natural resources, uh, attributes of the Ladano property. The dotted, um, red lines that you see represent, uh, the ones on the left there represent the town properties. I wanted to keep showing the juxtaposition of that. And the square at the bottom is an existing four acre property owned by Tom Talbot that, uh, in conversations with Tom that he's had with the Conservation Commission, if we were able to acquire the Ladano parcel, he would be willing to donate that as well. So that could actually become part of that, that piece there. So the Ladano property is centered around Monument Hill. Uh, you can see Shoddy Mill Road to the north. It, it butts the Shoddy Hill, uh, Shoddy Mill Road. I believe it has a little over thirteen hundred acres of frontage. You can see the Burnet Brook system, which, uh, immediate, you know, was adjacent to it. So it has an important sort of watershed juxtaposition, uh, as large forested track helping to belt buffer the high quality of the Burnet Brook system, which is a high, uh, rated by the D E P is a high water quality. It has wild brown trout and brook trout populations in it. Um, the dots are the vernal pools. When we did the vernal pool survey this past spring, it has a very high concentration of vernal pools. Um, and to give you an example of that, there are fifteen vernal pools in this one hundred and sixty-two acres. If you compare that to the over seven hundred acres of Bishop Swamp, uh, there are, I believe, nine to ten vernal pools in that. And the, uh, six hundred or so acres of, of, uh, Nathan Hale State Forest, which also only has six to ten vernal, or nine to ten vernal pools. So it has a very high density of vernal pools. The other colorations that you see there, the purples and the blues are other wetlands associated with the property and wetland soils. So you see that it has a fair number of wetlands associated with it as well. Um, the other lines, this is a topographic map underlay that I have. So you can see, I think Monument Hill peaks at about six hundred and eighty feet somewhere in there, based on the topographic maps. So this gives you an idea of some of the natural resource characters of the property um, and the value from a natural resource perspective um, of the habitats that it supports, both forested as well as wetland. There are really no trails in there with the exception of an old carriage road that, or cart road that runs from Shoddy Mill almost all the way down to, um, uh, Boston Hill Road, right up through the center, center of the property. It's very walkable through that one path. Uh, there are a couple of side logging trails, uh, that more, that kind of dead end. But there is the potential for the establishment of, of a recreational trail system through, through the property. So that gives you a look at the, um, the site. Now, if we were to combine, um,
Hank, what's the, what's the big yellow, the box in the upper right, upper left hand corner?
That's the town boundary. So that's the town boundary line there with Bolton.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so if we combine those contiguous pieces, the property, uh, that, uh, we already have, uh, with the town lands, as well as if we were to acquire the, the, the Ladano piece, um, what I don't have in there is the Talbot, but that would also be included in that. We could have a conservation area that would be about two hundred and four acres. Um, you know, that would make, you know, I'm tentatively calling this the Monument Hill Conservation Area. Uh, the red star would be the area where there would be potential public access. That's along Shoddy Mill Road. There is a gate that goes, that, that crosses there. That's the, where the cart path is. And as you enter that cart, on the cart path, there's an area that's fairly cleared. Right now, it's in some shrub and herbaceous growth. It was probably a staging area when they were doing logging operations in there. Um, which could easily be, um, you know, it's fairly dry, could easily be converted into a small unimproved parking area, uh, that could support, you know, that, that would support the conservation area. So that's kind of the vision. So it showed you the, sort of the landscape connectivity within our open space corridor. Um, the value of the, the parcel itself from its natural resources and potential recreational value, and then show you how this sort of comes together. So any questions about the parcel or its connections before I talk about where we are in the process? Okay, um, so here's where we are. So we undertook an appraisal. Uh, and the appraisal came back, uh, for four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, the current asking price is five hundred and forty-nine, five hundred. Um, we're looking at a potential proposal, uh, of, to, you know, for sale of five hundred thousand dollars. Um, note that any purchase would be contingent upon um, and a successful D E P grant award and approval at a town vote. Those are two process pieces that would need to occur. Uh, we have exist in our town open space fund, I think it's a little over two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, Connecticut, and we're proposing to go to the Connecticut D E P for their municipal open space grant program, which funds up to sixty-five percent of the appraised value. Did I hear somebody question? No? And Eric or Jim, please jump in if, if there's something that, that you feel needs to be added. Um, it's important to note that, uh, as of recently, we have, we found out that there is a pending private off, offer on the parcel. Uh, that's about as much detail as we have on that. So it's, it's possible that, you know, that, that, the, uh, the trust and the realtor may accept that, the trust may accept that. Uh, we don't know, but we are going forward with the assumption that we're continuing to, until we hear that they've, you know, they've actually formally accepted that. Um, we're, we're moving forward as, uh, as planned to, uh, prepare to submit a proposal because we have a bit of a time crunch. The proposals from the deep are due, uh, September thirtieth. Um, so that's a, and there's a fair number of things that we would need to put together. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank everybody for take, you know, um, taking on quick notice, the time out of your busy schedules, I'm sure, here at the end of summer, um, to, uh, agree to meet tonight. Uh, I really appreciate it. Thank you. And uh, it's really because we have a, a time crunch or we wouldn't ask you to do, to do that. Um, what we're seeking tonight is approval for the use of the open space funds for purchase. Um, that would need to be, I think, a formal recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to the Board of Selectmen, um, that, uh, because I believe that's the process that would need to be followed. So that's kind of where we are. What we need to do, uh, for sort of the next steps would be assuming you approve that and, uh, it, it made a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, it would need to be a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, potentially as early as next week. Um, and we would need several things. One, from the Board of Selectmen, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the open space funds. That's needed as part of the application. Um, we also would need approval to sort of enter negotiations with the real estate agent for Ladano's trust. Um, we have, uh, mindful of its short timetable. Um, uh, Jim and Eric, uh, and myself have had conversations with the town attorney. And we do have a prepared draft sales agreement, so we've, we've got a, a good sense of that, including some of the contingencies. Um, and then we would also need from the Board of Selectmen sort of an approval to submit an application to the deep on behalf of the town. And as I mentioned, that, at, those applications are due at the, um, end of the month. I'm about three quarters of the way through writing of the proposal, which obviously would go through a review process internally. Um, you know, so that's, uh, you know, that we have a pretty good jump on that, uh, as well. And I've had several conversations over the past months and several in the past week, um, with the Program Officer for the Department of Environmental Protection, who runs the municipal support, or municipal grant program. So I know that's a lot, but that's kind of, you know, the, gives you background of the parcel and its importance. And also, uh, gives you a sense of where we are and, um, sort of the next steps with the Board of Selectmen. So I'll, I'll sort of stop my part presentation there and please Eric or, or, um, Jim, if there's anything you feel needs to be added, chime in.
I have a question. Have, have the owners, the current ownership of the property, have they made any indication that they would like to work with the town to make this a conservation area?
Eric, can you answer that? I mean, you've had, I think you've probably had the closest conversations there with, uh, realtors or, or representatives of the trust.
I don't see Eric on the screen.
Is he off? Oh, is he off?
And he's muted.
I know they're aware of it, um, and my understanding is when we had a conversation, I, I've not been a party to any of the conversations. I do know that there was, you know, the realtor was aware of that. Um, and then I believe that the, um, the trust also had indicated that, uh, they would not subdivide or they would not move forward um, uh, until, uh, you know, because they were aware that we were, you know, we were interested. Um, and that we were potentially moving forward with a, a, um, a grant proposal. Um, the realtor did, uh, reconnect with us since there's a new realtor now, um, to let us know that, uh, the trust has a, you know, has received an application and wanted to know where we were in the process. So they're aware of it and I, from, based on that, I would assume that they're willing to work with us, assuming that, um, you know, assuming that they didn't have a better deal.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Hank, is the, uh, when you talk to the folks at deep, you know, is the, it says the applications due September thirtieth, uh, is it a first come, first served basis kind of thing? And do they have lots of money, uh? Or is it, uh, what, what's your sense on that?
The state has, I know they have a minimum of five million dollars slotted for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and fi, and another five million for twenty-three. Um, they may have some additional funding because the state's under some pressure because they're behind in the overall open space goals for the state, which close out, which the goal is through two thousand twenty-three. So I think they're trying to close as much of that gap as they can. Um, it's very competitive Jed. Uh, it's not so much a first come, first served, it's just, you know, it's a competitive grant application. There's really no wiggle room on the thirtieth. You have to get it in. It has to be a complete application. There are metrics to go out two years. So if we did receive an, an award, we would have two years to complete there, up to two years, depending on the task, to complete various things like closure on the property and so forth. Um, but as far as the application, um, we need to get it in on the thirtieth. It would need to be complete. And it would be part of a very competitive process. Um, but you know, that's, that's the nature of these, uh, you know, we don't know because it would depend on the quality of the other, other asks going in, uh, you know, how we would fit, um. Uh, you know, I just don't know. I mean, you know, the, uh, the property does fall within having spent a fair amount of time writing the proposal. One of the things you have to do is you have to look at a variety of different state initiatives, like the Climate Change Action Plan, the State Plan of Conservation Development, CROGS Regional Plan of Conservation Development, um, State Wildlife Action Plan, a ver, a number of them, a recreational plan. And the property does align with a number of those fairly well. Um, you know, we've got some, you know, we, we certainly have some good stories to tell and good, I think would score highly. And there are other areas where we don't score as high. Um, so I, I think it would really depend. It's a competitive grant.
Thanks. Steve, did you want to, uh, now that Eric's back, you want to try your question again?
Sure. No problem, Eric. We were just, uh, interested since they do have an, an, uh, you know, a, an offer already on the property. I was wondering if the owners had any preference to work with the town in terms of land conservation? Or whether they're just going for the highest bidder?
I don't know, because I've only, I've had a brief conversation with one member of the family. Um, you know, and I mean, I floated a couple of things. I mean, I said, well, you know, if we did, you know, do this, you know, we'd be, be happy to, you know, uh, give the family, you know, if we came to some kind of reasonable agreement, you know, we could, you know, forever designate it as the Ladano, you know, uh, you know, Ladano parcel or Ladano trust or something like that. And she wasn't really, that didn't seem to make a hill of beans to her. My sense was that it's a piece of land. It's an asset to try to unload.
Got it. Thank you.
I think the question in their minds is gonna be, what was the other offer that did they get? What is the town willing to offer? Is it worth their while to try to wait and gamble that they get the higher value? Or do they go for the offer at hand? And without knowing what the other offer is and what's in their minds, that's reading tea leaves.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Eric, uh, you know, out of tonight's meeting, I know we have talked about, uh, you know, making a motion to, uh, to approve some stuff and we'll look at that, uh, in a little bit. Um, is that all you need at this point to go to the Board of Selectmen next week?
Well, I think what, what really needs to happen is, because the Board of Selectmen isn't initiating this. This is being initiated by the Conservation Commission um, and presumably the Planning and Zoning Commission. So what it really requires is a request from you to pursue this and a statement on your part that you're willing to expend the open space fund. You know, that this is a priority for the commissions and you're willing to expend the open space funds to, to get it.
Okay, so I'm, I'm copying here and I didn't get too far. So how about a statement from me about what? To pursue it?
So just essentially a statement saying the board of, or the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Conservation Commission think this is a parcel the town should attempt to acquire. Um, and that this represents a really good, what you guys think is a, an appropriate use of the open space funds. Um, and that essentially what you're doing is you're looking for permission to, you know, you're looking for, for them to make an offer to the Ladanos, you know, to purchase this property under the conditions you outlined.
And, and when would you need that? I didn't ask when you'd like it, uh, two different things.
So I am asking the Board of Selectmen to do a special meeting prior to the town meeting, which is scheduled on, I believe, the eighth. I'll tell you in just a second.
Yep, I think it's the eighth.
Yeah, on the eighth.
So you think that they would have a special meeting on the seventh, or, and it would need to be in by then? So early next week?
Before the eighth, so like six thirty on the eighth.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
Jed, can't we just make a motion tonight?
Uh, we, we can make a motion tonight. It sounded like Eric was looking for a letter from me to, uh, expound on that motion just a little bit and, uh, I'm sure Hank's got, uh, some stuff that he would do with the, with the Board of Selectmen as well from the Conservation Commission, but I, it, it sounds like Eric's looking for a little bit more than just the fact that we made a motion uh, here tonight and approved it one way or the other. And I can do that. If I got a couple of days, I can get that done.
Eric, would we need a formal letter from the Conservation Commission or uh, me presenting to the, you know, to, at the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the, I mean, how? Process wise?
So process wise, I think what, what should happen is if the Board of Selectmen agrees to a special meeting, I would say both you and Jed should attend and you should present the information you have, Hank. And then Jed, you should basically present the motion that was passed by the zoning commission. Um, and say, we would like to pursue this. We'd like to, to make the motion. Um, I already gave them the town's attorney's draft of the offer purchase. Um, you know, so they can have reviewed that ahead of time and hopefully if they got any questions or comments about it ahead of time, they can get it back to me so I can get it down sturdy. Because I mean, ideally the day after that, I would like to, uh, you know, submit it to their, uh,
Yeah.
You know.
When would the eight twenty-four referral come here? Or is that not applicable in this case? Because we're recommended and the Board of Selectmen's not asking.
Well, so it will eventually, we'll eventually have to have a formal. So let's, let's talk through long term what needs to happen. You know, for the town to purchase land. So we're gonna have to make them an offer. They're gonna have to say, yes, we'll consider that. You're gonna have to get the grant. Once you got the grant in, you know, an agreement from the state, then at that point, then what you do is you go back to the Board of Selectmen or correction, the Board of Selectmen goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and specifically asks for an eight twenty-four referral for the purchase of the land. So you hold a, not a hearing, but you make a decision as the, the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission and you send that back to the Board of Selectmen. And then the Board of Selectmen hold the town meeting and a town meeting makes a decision whether the town should allocate the funds for or not. Because it's over the point oh five, uh, point five percent, point five percent, you know, of the total budget, not including RAM. So that, so that amount of money automatically goes to a town meeting for proof.
And, and none of that town meeting stuff can be done at the town meeting scheduled on the eighth because that's just too soon.
Correct, correct. Yeah. Yes. And you have to officially have an eight twenty-four referral prior to that anyway.
Well, I would assume that the realtor is gonna tune in to, uh, you know, watch the Zoom movie. And, and so he's gonna know what our plan is.
He very well may, yeah. And I think you're, you're maybe having more sophistication on the part of the realtor than is warranted, but yeah, a smart realtor might do that. Yep. And I'm not saying he's not a smart realtor. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm not sure how many realtors really understand town politics enough to know that, that information would be available for.
Yep, okay, um. Any other commission members have any other questions?
I, I have another question. So the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in town open space fund, are there any other potential parcels or projects or any other uh, opportunities to use that money that the town would consider? In other words, if we, if we purchase this property, is there an opportunity cost for something else that may be down the road that we, we need to consider?
I, I mean, there's always other, you know, at, at least, at least once a year, we look at something and think about the potential, its potential uses should be considered for open space. So this is, this would be a pretty big commitment. Um, you know, now I would also say if we did this, I would certainly go back to the Board of Finance and say, hey, you know, we need to do what most towns do, which is start funding open space on an annual basis. Uh, so we can build this thing back up, but there's also zero guarantee that they're gonna say yes. Um, and that it makes it through the budget process. So while I think it's a good idea, I think there's a lot of things that are good ideas and not everybody agrees with me.
Uh, Steve, I can add to that a little bit. I mean, one of the act, activities that the Conservation Commission has been undertaking, um, and we're, we're, we're a bit into this, but you know, not having completed it, is we're conducting a natural resource inventory in preparation for the two thousand twenty-five um, plan of conservation and development. And as part of that, we are looking at, we're layering various data sets associated with parcels, uh, with, especially within those open space corridors. with, especially within those open space corridors where, you know, where we tend to direct open space acquisitions. Which is obviously, if you saw, there's three quarters, so there's quite a few parcels. So we've been doing that, that mapping process. We actually have drafted a rubric for sort of ranking those and trying to, trying to get on top of it in a, in a strategic way. Should parcels become available so that we can, you know, we can make some decisions? I mean, you know, it's, in order to do this effectively, it's a two-part equation. Eric mentioned one, which is, you know, continual mechanisms to fund sources of, of purchases or, or purchase of transfer, you know, development rights or conservation easements or acquisitions. But the other part is being strategic about where do we really need to do this? And so when they come up, we're, we're not, we're not reacting. We're sort, you know, this one kind of hit us a little early, but I can tell you that looking at all the dat, all the data, even in our rubric that we have now, the state, it's in now in the mapping, the Ladono parcel comes up in the top 10. I mean, it's very, it's a, it's an important parcel. Because of the size and because of all the, the sort of attributes I mentioned earlier. But it's, it was a good question and one that we're trying to, trying to get on top of. And there are also sources of external funding beyond the DEP grant. There are farmland preservation and various other sources. And I believe that over the next few years, there will be a push on that. Because that, you know, the state's trying to achieve some goals, so there may be even further opportunities. There's nothing that prevents us, if we were to go forward and get a successful award, there's nothing that prevents us from going in for another parcel in 2023.
Thanks Hank and Eric. That's very helpful. I mean, knowing that you guys developed the rubric and this falls into the top 10. And based on the available properties now, this seems like it's right at the top of the list, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a strong, I mean, to give you an idea, the top two on that list are existing ones. I mean, in, in our scoring rubric, they're Bishop Swamp Wildlife Management Area and Nathan Hale State Forest. They obviously would score very high because they're huge and they have a lot of habitats and all that sort of thing. So they're the top scorers out of that, you know, but then you get into some other parcels in the town that are large. Especially if you start to combine them, you know, like the post-farm area, you know, that, that's broken into multiple parcels. Arguably, that's a, you know, that's probably one of the most important parcels and, you know, the, the sequence of those in, in the town. And by the way, if you go back to the Planet Conservation Development from 2015, they call out some of these. Like the post-farm, they didn't necessarily call Ladono, but they call out larger parcels in some of those. And unfortunately, they did call out some that we've already lost opportunities on because we hadn't, we hadn't done an activity like this and we weren't sort of ready for it. And they just sort of hit the market and then, you know, we end up having to react. Sometimes we didn't find out about it until, you know, it's already sold. So we're trying to, we're trying to be proactive, which is, you know, it's very difficult with smaller towns where the resources are stretched. You know, there's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult. It's, you know, if you're a large town and you've got large budgets and you've got GIS department and things like that, you know, and, but I also think the state recognizes that, you know, when, you know, folks like us are coming in for applications, they recognize that, you know, it's a little, little, little harder for us to put all this together.
Sure. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
I do think it's important to note, you know, when, when Hank was talking about the Planet Conservation Development, I think there was, you know, three things in there from the survey that, you know, coming up on six or seven years old, that people were willing to pay more taxes on. And in one of them was the purchase of open space stuff. Now, this isn't going to cost us any tax dollars because it's already money put aside. We're going to have to replenish that pot, but and I think, you know, the, the nature that, that Hank explained to us on why it's so great stands on its own, but the fact if we can get, you know, at least half of it paid for by a grant, that, who knows how, how the vote would go, but you sure make a compelling reason that we ought to take advantage of this one. And we have not made any progress on increasing our open space properties in the last several years. So this is helpful for all that stuff. Okay, Eric, anything else you wanted to share with us on this?
No, I mean, really my job is the administrator is just trying to facilitate this. I mean, I see this is coming from the commissions, not from me personally. But I agree with it. Yeah. That's all I got to say.
Okay. So Hank, I guess at this point, if you could stop sharing your screen.
Will do.
I know Jim, you made up a, a draft motion for us to use as a starting point here. Do you have that such that you can display it? I think I can if you don't have it.
Um, I've made some changes to it. I'd be happy to read it.
I, I did read it. I don't know that I've read your changes.
No, I just, I put it together very quickly and there was just some minor changes. And actually I, I put forth four recommendations. Three in the draft and a fourth.
Any chance you can put it on the screen for us?
I don't have the ability with, right now, with this.
Would it be helpful for me to put your previous draft up just as a starting point so everybody can see it?
Sure, that'd be great.
Jim, could you just email it to me real quick and I'll share it?
I don't know. I think if I go, I, I'm on an email. I'm on your email to get here. And so if I back out, last time I backed out to send that email out to everybody, it tripped me out of Zoom and I had to come back in. Jim, can you, can you forward your copy to Eric by email right now?
I'm not able to do that. No.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, Jim, why don't you tell us what it says? We can write it down and and just make the motion. We'll just make the motion.
Let me put up, let me put up what we had and then Jim can tell us the changes to it.
Sure.
Everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. So I think, well, Jim, walk us through it. I think the first paragraph, you know, probably stays the same.
Move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of Selectmen will forward with the acquisition of 180, 162 acres of land owned by the Ladono family, furnished on Shoddy Mill Road. Boundary survey filed at map 841 of the land records. More particularly, PCC recommends the following. One, town will form with an application for matching funds through the state, state of Connecticut's Open Space and Watership Protection Program. All funds in the town's open space fund as of this date, 8/31/22, be made available as towns match. Such funds shall be made available for acquisition and ancillary expenses. The latter shooting shall include, but not limited to, the cost of a review appraisal, construction of parking area, gate and signage. Number three, the Board of Selectmen, another recommendation, Board of Selectmen authorized the town administrator to enter into negotiations with the property owner and execute a personal sale agreement prepared by the town attorney with the requisite contingencies. And I added a fourth that the Planning and Zoning Commission authorized Jed to submit a letter of support for the actual grant application itself on behalf of the commission.
Oh, it's number four again, Jim? Say that one again.
That the commission authorized its chairman to prepare a letter of support for the grant application on behalf of the commission.
Jed, who?
That's just, it's a component of the application. And, you know, a number of letters of support will be submitted as part of the application, one of them being the Planning and Zoning Commissions.
Okay.
Okay, so the commission authorizes Jed to offer a letter of support for the application?
Yes, to, to prepare a letter of support. To accompany the application.
Okay, so Jim, yeah, Jim's got the motion. And he's right in the minute, so I know he will get the motion correctly into the minutes from tonight. Any, so I make a motion to approve what Jim just led us through. Which is essentially the, the three points we're looking at, plus the fourth that I'll prepare a letter of support.
Correct. I'll second that.
Okay, thank you Scott. Any, any discussion by any of the commission members? Hearing done. A call for a vote. Ian?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
And I vote, I as well. The motion passes 5-0-0. Anything else you were looking for tonight on, on that, Hank or Eric?
No, not that I can think of, not on my end.
Okay, well, I, on behalf of the commission, I appreciate the effort that both of you do, especially you Hank have, have put into this. I think it's a, a good thing. It allows us to do something that, you know, back in 2015, we said we wanted to do. So it's about time. I don't know that we'll be successful, but we're certainly giving it a good effort to, to try and pull it off. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you to the commission for again, taking the time on short notice to have a special meeting. And also to Jim and Eric for all their efforts on a short notice to pull some of this work together.
Okay, I'm going to move on to item four, public speak. I don't think anybody, anybody want to speak from the public perspective?
It's better to burn out than to fade away.
The next regularly. Say again?
Yeah.
Okay. Next regularly scheduled meeting is coming up on September 21st. And I will make a motion that we adjourn. It's just as easy to do a roll call vote on that. So Ian?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Leanne?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Motion to adjourn passes 5-0-0. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, go ahead, Leanne.
Is the next meeting on Monday, the 19th or Wednesday, the 21st?
Oh.
19th.
Okay, yep.
Keep on calling it a Wednesday.
Thank you, Leanne.